One more speaker, all right, come on up. State your name and address for the record. Somebody's phone was left there?
It looks like a radio.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Annie Montgomery, 2082 Northeast 124th Street. And I am that unhappy resident that Mr. Frank Wallen is speaking of. And if you look at his letter, he has named me. Several years ago, one unhappy North Miami resident, Annie Montgomery, began making complaints to the city with regard to my client's properties. Several code enforcements matters followed. If Mr. Wallen did his homework, he would know I was not the first or the second person to complain about the boat lifts that were built. These boat lifts did require a variance. There was never a variance applied for by any, all three. There was one got after-the-fact permit. It's on the record. It's, check your permits. They went ahead, got the permit, built the unit, built the lift, and then our city gave them an after-the-fact permit. Our staff. The ordinance that was adopted in 2012-202 was not done lightly. We had four second readings. There were a lot of people in this room. Counsel, our counsel at that time worked hard. They came back four times for the second reading. So it wasn't done very lightly. The letter from the gentleman that wrote the letter, "There is no catch basin or turnaround basin in that canal. They're all mangroves at the end of that canal, and the water table is very low. So there's no way you can turn a big boat around over there." And then they remarked that if there's no docks, you can turn your boat around. That is not a very good letter. Mr. Wallen doesn't know me well enough to know that I'm happy or unhappy, and I really resent what he has put in this letter in writing.
Ladies and gentlemen, please refrain from comments.
Mr. Martinez, Angel. Yeah, his son called my office on a townhome one day that I had on the market. I want to put this on the record. And he pretended he was looking for a townhome. And then he proceeded to tell me who he was and threatened me. And I filed a police report. That's also on the record. And the boat lift was up already. I ended the conversation by said, "I do not want to have any more of this conversation," and I hung up.
Ladies and gentlemen, please keep your comments to yourself.
No, I don't get angry.
All right, Ms. Montgomery, can you continue?
I'm sorry. Well, they're making remarks.
I understand.
All right, let's just maintain order in here. I mean, we're gonna be here all night till 3 o'clock in the morning if you guys keep going back and forth.
Every one of these people that put these boat lifts up were aware of our ordinance. Our city staff is trying to cover their butt because they approved these ordinances. They approved the boat lifts. And the contractor, I know one of them, was very well aware of our ordinance because he participated when we had this ordinance created. I guess that's about pretty much all I have to say. But please don't approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Next speaker, please. State your name and address for the record.
Ray Russo, 2140 Northeast 124th Street. I was involved with, pretty heavily involved, with the ordinance, the current ordinance that was taken up about 10 years or so ago. At the time, we had an individual who was kinda spearheading the effort to park perpendicular for the townhomes. And he had, he had like a 32-foot open fisherman that he would just park, you know, perpendicular. By the time he lifted his engines up, I mean, the boat was sticking out like 36 feet into the canal. So the problem was kinda opening the door on the perpendicular parking. And, and by the way, let me just take, step back just for a second. And I think it's very unfortunate that the three residents that, you know, essentially got permission to put in these illegal boat lifts. I mean, they got the permit, and then they were, you know, they suffered, you know, financial harm here because then they, they went out and had to spend the money. And now they're being told they can't, you know, have it this way. So it's, it's really the city's fault for allowing that. And I don't look forward, and I don't take pleasure in coming out here against my neighbors. But I just wanted to point out that the problem with opening up the perpendicular solution is you're gonna have, you know, egregious boating there with boats sticking way out, okay? And the city of North Miami Police Department, like, like they told us last time, is gonna enforce this. They can enforce it. It's impossible. Nobody enforces it. So where it all sounds great right now, and then all of their arguments were very good arguments. The problem is, once you open up the door with the perpendicular, you start getting egregious, you know, behavior. And you got boats sticking out in the canal 30, 40 feet. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a dangerous situation. The shoreline, on really both sides of the canal, is pretty shallow. So that means that the perpendicular boat parking really has to even get a little bit further out from the, from the seawall, just to begin with. And then when you got the 32-foot boat, then with the motor sticking up, it's 36, 37 feet. I mean, it just starts getting out of hand. So I really don't see how you're gonna allow the perpendicular boat parking and then say that nobody's ever gonna have a boat that's, you know, sticking out into the canal 36 feet. I don't know how you do that. Because traditionally and historically, the city has not been able to, you know, enforce this. You know, if everything, if, I, I really don't have a problem, to tell you the truth, with the way the boats are on the three lifts in question. I mean, they're small boats. It's really not an issue. But the problem is, again, once you open up the door with the perpendicular parking, you're gonna get people sticking way out. They're just gonna take full advantage of it. And it's unfortunate. So, anyway, that's my take on it.
All right, thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
2171 Northeast 123rd Street. There's been a lot of issues brought up tonight. And, you know, some people pointed out code enforcement isn't doing their job correctly. Some people pointed out staff isn't doing their job correctly. Planning didn't do their job correctly. Or permitting department didn't do their job correctly. And we're the ones being punished. Townhomes are being punished. I'm being punished. I hired a contractor, went through all the proper channels to permit my boat lift. And now I'm being punished. And we're trying to, you know, resolve this issue. And, and I don't feel it's fair that we should be punished for doing things the correct way. And that's all I got to say. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Is anyone else wishing to speak to this? Second call. Yes, sir, come on up. If there's anyone else that wants to speak to this, please get in line. Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel Aguirre. I'm at 1860 Northeast Laurel Lane. And I've lived there for about 22 years. And sorry I'm late. I go up and down the canal all the time. And I have a 32-foot boat. And I heard the gentleman earlier speak about that 32-foot boat. I remember when this was going on a long time ago. If the city issued the permits for them, you know, and, and they were done according to the plans, you know, it's just my feeling that, you know, the city is responsible for that. As far as how far, you know, if a, if the, if the policy is, you know, that you can only come out so far, okay? And also, I don't have a problem with the, with the ones that are in question either. But if, if we keep them, you know, at a certain length, okay? That, you know, I personally would never have a problem driving through there. I don't think anybody else would have a problem, you know, driving through there. Now, if they were to be, you know, perpendicular lifts were allowed to be longer than the ones that are there, then I see a problem. Then I see a huge problem there. Because then, then it would be too narrow. But if it's to accommodate a home of that width property, to have some, you know, the extension where it's reasonable for people to come through, you know, 20% of the canal or whatever it may be now. I personally, as a homeowner in that neighborhood, I, I don't have a problem with it. Because what I've seen in the past is people have gone sideways. And now they're going into other people's yards. So since this ordinance has been passed, I've seen 40-foot boats taking up not only their property, but asking permission for the property owner next door and the one next door, you know, and just parking parallel with. So perpendicular, you know, what good is it? You know, I mean, or parallel, what good is that? You know, if they allow to do that, then, then that really looks sloppy. You know, it looks bad. So by doing it perpendicular and doing it, you know, within the guidelines that we've set so far, that's fine. But I don't think the homeowner should be held liable for, for something that's already been permitted, allowed, filed, you know, passed final inspection and everything. And really doesn't have an effect on, you know, what the, the navigation of the, of the canal is. And that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am. You've already spoken.
I know, but with all the speed that...
Well, no.
One time.
One time only.
One time, sorry. One time. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Next speaker. Do we have another speaker? Second call. Seeing none. Last call for speakers. Seeing none. Public area is closed. All right, time for commission discussion. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's hear your opinions. Bob, I'll let you start off.
Yeah, I've got a couple of, I've actually got a couple of thoughts. One is with just, I have two questions for our staff, really. The way this is written, as I read it, there's, there's two issues. We've got perpendicular docking and the encroachment into the channel. And the way this is written, it says to allow dolphins, floating vessel platforms, hydrohoists, boat lifts, and watercraft into the city's waterways and channels. So I read this as written, that that affects all of, all of North Miami. The allowance to be able to go 30 feet or 30%. So that, that language I have a bit of an issue with. Secondly, this seems to have started with three gentlemen that got permits. It seems to be a question of whether all of them were before or after the lifts were built. And I'm trying, maybe the city attorney can help me with who actually had the authority to provide those. I mean, I understand the city, and I sympathize for these guys. They got a permit that was absolutely in violation of the ordinances. So who had the authority to provide that?
The, the building official actually issued a permit in error. That's what it comes down to. A permit issued in error. Permits issued in error.
How, how long did it take to find out that it was issued in error?
You have to speak into the microphone.
How long did it take for them to bring it to the client's...
When, when the property, the applicants began to receive violation letters. And at that point, it came to light that these structures were built in error.
So, but to continue that question, the staff report says that they got a permit and then went out and said, "Well, it's not big enough. So I'll just park perpendicular." So it seems that based upon what I'm reading, the permit they obtained isn't what ultimately was being done. You went and did something else. And that's the way this reads.
Commissioner Petro, if I could clarify, as our city attorney, interim city attorney mentioned, the permits were approved by our building official. But I need to clarify that the permits are based on the structural integrity. So the building official ruled that structurally it was sound. The issue is orientation. So for argument's sake, if your structure is sound and your vessel is small enough to be moored parallel, then there ceased to be a conflict with the code. The conflict occurs when the orientation is prohibited because the size of the vessel is too big for the shoreline. It's a very important distinction. Because a building official is licensed. A building official makes a judgment call based on structural integrity, not orientation. Orientation is more subjective. Because the individual getting the permit has now, is now obligated to comply with the regulations of the code that says you must be moored parallel to the shoreline. Very important distinction.
Well, so then they weren't granted access for perpendicular docking?
They were given a permit for a structure that was deemed to be sound. And they were expected to comply with the regulations of the code with the permits issued.
Then the contractor was, who does a lot of building in the community, he built one in violation of known ordinances? Is that what we're doing?
I, I can't speak for the intent of the contractor. But the contractor is expected to do his due diligence and to understand the requirements of the code. When you apply for an application, you're expected to understand.
Obviously, that didn't happen here. So, I mean, I think at some point, the contractor needs to be held accountable for everybody and maybe censured for the city of North Miami. So back to, so back to the dual issue. I sympathized greatly with the people that have problems docking their boats. And as I did, the dozen cities around the state of Florida who have similar navigational issues as we've got, most, many of them prohibit perpendicular docking. Okay, that's just what they do. The others, though, all of which are less intrusion into the channel than the proposal here. They go, "As long as you don't go 20 feet into the channel or 25 feet in the channel based on the city, we don't speak to how you have to dock your boat." Now, I'm actually comfortable with that. As the last gentleman that came up, he go, "If these current boat lifts and docks are perpendicular and that allows for access, and they maintain the setbacks from the adjoining property and the like, as long as, we're not gonna change the city codes so that they can get a bigger boat." If a guy, with all due respect, if a guy buys a boat with a 19, buys a lot with a 19-foot waterfront and buys a 40-foot boat, I don't know where he expects to dock it. And certainly in the city of North Miami, it's against the law. So if, 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 if you wanna think about maybe allowing or just eliminating the language about parallel mooring, but maintain the integrity of the intrusion into the channel. Because all of the cities I've just mentioned, no one recommends 30. The city of North Miami, I'm sorry, the city of Miami Beach says you can go 10% into the channel. And in a very wide channel, you can go 15%. So I would actually be, I think there's still some staff work to be done. But I think to satisfy these people's requirement, where they wanna be able to conveniently moor their boat, if you can do it in the space that's allowed, so be it. But if, in order for you to be able to do that, look, I'd like to put an 80-foot boat behind my house. I don't have the space. So what does that mean? We gotta change the laws so I can get a boat? I think that if the laws are 20% or 25 feet, I'm sorry, 20 feet or 25%, whichever is less, however you can moor your boat there, I'm actually not bad with. But I don't wanna change the distance.
All right, Emmanuel, your turn.
It seems as if we have a conflict with the different departments that are involved in the process. As it was brought to our attention earlier, one department approved it, then code enforcement went back and started citing these people. I understand, I understand their concern. You know, they, they pay high premiums. Then they, they want to be able to allow, you know, allow their boat to be docked, the way, the way we've been discussing. So we need to come up with something, some sort of solution or some sort of recommendation so we could revisit this issue, as this is a concern for everyone. But we, we don't wanna play the blame game. However, let staff do their job. They're all qualified. They're here for a reason. So let's not discredit them. And whatever decision they come with, whatever recommendations, they're in the best interest of the city. And if they're not, they'll be dealt with accordingly.
Yes, well, that, that brings us down to the question, you see, of whether you support the change in the ordinance or not. That's what we really look for. And that comes down to a yes or a no. See, at the end of the night, I need to call a consensus here. And so which way are we going on this?
I'd support the change.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Boulay, what are your thoughts then? Although, folks, we got a lot of commissioners to hear from tonight. And everybody's entitled to a different opinion. Ms. Boulay, go ahead, please.
And here comes the booze. I'm still on the fence about it. I'm not a boater. I've boated. I've been on boats, of course. I've been in that same area. And I understand where the concerns lie on both ends. For those opposing and for those that are for it. As far as it being a convenience, a matter of convenience, I get it. I would definitely want for my investment to, for me to be able to enjoy my investment. And as this gentleman just said, he spent over, what was it, $530,000 so far in repairs and upgrades and so on and so forth to his property. So I'm sure, of course, after spending half a million dollars plus, you definitely want to enjoy the fruits of your labor. So that I do understand. However, my concern is whether it's safe or not. If we can prove that it is safe, you know, in case of an emergency, a natural disaster, a fire, whatever, that it's, it's, it's safe and sound for, for the residents to get their vessels out or residents that are probably on their vessels during a natural disaster or something like that, that they can all get out safely. So that would, that is my only reservation. And if we can compass that, then I'm okay with it. However, I will say this to the gentleman who spoke in reference to you being in the military. We are definitely sensitive to those that are in the military. We have two of our very own, I believe, two or three of our very own that have served, and we have one that is currently serving. And I'm super proud of this gentleman. And I don't think whether you, you've served our country and, or you're, you're serving our community has anything to do with whether you can park your boat parallel, parallel or perpendicular. In my opinion, I just think this whole matter, for me, is a matter of safety. And like I said, I, I get the whole convenience piece of it all. And I do agree with Ema, Commissioner Emmanuel, that we shouldn't play the blame game. Let's just figure out where, where the core of the issue lies. Let's figure out a resolution. And I, I have no problem yielding to the staff, as Emmanuel said, Commissioner Emmanuel said, they, they are very competent. And I see no issues with yielding to them as far as what resolutions they seek to resolve this matter. So if safety isn't an issue after whatever further review that needs to be done, I, I don't see a problem with approving it.
All right, to my right, Mr. Ernst.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, please hold. Applause is not part of the formal record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were some very compelling arguments regarding the width of the property. I think this is a very unusual circumstance where you find a 19-foot wide piece of property that you have to try to accommodate a boat that you find today, especially an outboard. Yeah, outboards have gotten bigger. And the, the, even with stern drives, they protrude out probably a little further, believe it or not, than some of the outboards because the outboards, you can trim them in. But some of the outdrives, you probably can't. I agree with you. That is a problem. However, two things that struck me that I was unhappy about in the presentation. One on page three of six of the staff report that we got. The act of arguments argued that the ability to use the water behind, waterway behind their property for boaters hinders their quality of life and puts them in an unfair disadvantage. You own a boat. That's a pretty good quality of life. To have that argument presented to us is kind of shameful, I'm sorry to say. When we have people in this community that have never been on a boat because they can't afford it. So please don't come up and put this in the presentation, that this is a disadvantage. You're privileged that you are able to afford to buy a boat. So, Mr. Wallen, pointing that out in your argument, I, I find that, sir, very disingenuous at most. That something like that would be stated, that that would be a, that that would be a quality of life disadvantage or hindrance. So, and then for us to have to apologize to staff for making our stands, no. And by the way, sir, I see you shaking your head. I served in Vietnam. I'm a veteran. I applaud your service, sir. And this has nothing to do with whether or not I served in the service or you served in the service.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, no comments. No, sir. This is, this is commission discussion only, sir. You, you had your time. Mr. Ernst has the floor.
Again, getting back to the real issue. Yes, it is a problem that you only have 19 feet. Perpendicular parking of your boat is probably going to solve that. If we're looking at it for just these townhomes along that canal and everybody that owns a townhome along that canal sees fit that it can be a, a, solving of their problem, then perhaps it's a good thing. However, I would hope that if it were concurred by everybody on this panel, that that would happen, that we come up with a uniform way that this is addressed and not just saying that, "Okay, we're allowing perpendicular parking." I wanna maintain the 25, the same amount of leeway. And I think we can get away with the 20% width or 25 feet, which is, which is permitted now. Because nobody here has come and said that they own anything longer than, than that. We kind of did a show of hands for that. Nobody has a 34-foot contender that they're bringing through that bridge and parking underneath there. So I have no issues with that. But if I were to go along and approve this, I would want our staff and I would want us to come up with a standardized set of guidelines as far as where those mooring palings would be in that canal, distance from the, from the, from the property line out to the water's edge. Because I know there's a drop-off. It's probably only one to two feet. It probably gets shallow, shallow in there with low tide. So you may lose some of that depth closer to the shore. These are things that unfortunately I'm not aware of because we weren't given the facts as to what those conditions are. So having said that, I would approve the perpendicular parking for just this area, for those townhomes, if we can come up with a solution to the distance of these mooring palings and a standardization of the docking elements along the shoreline. And so far as I know, the city hasn't addressed this and neither have we because it's never come up. This is one of the reasons why I had, I had suggested and wanted to look at a continuance of this. So that all these issues could be looked at and a standardized, just for your area, standardized plan could be put in place area, standardized plan could be put in place that will solve this problem. I agree, putting, trying to put in even a twenty-two footer or a boat of legal size into nineteen feet is not a good idea. And it stinks. As a boater, I agree with you on that. But, again, we have to understand that we can't flaunt the law. If anyone flaunted the law, you got a violation ticket for it, outside of the one particular party who obviously got a, 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 a bad, uh, decision made by a city staffer, and that's regrettable that that happened. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, that's where I stand. I, I could support it.
All right, so you can support it, and you're making recommendations.
Absolutely.
Okay.
If we were to allow permanent, perpendicular parking, we would only allow it for this townhome section that are nineteen feet wide, and this would almost have to be like a special exception, if I'm not correct.
Well, that, that condition for the, uh, to allow the perpendicular parking, mooring of the boat.
Right.
That's just for this particular property.
Right, so it wouldn't have to be considered a special exception.
So, that is limited. Commissioner Pichon did bring up a good point, and that is that the extension of the waterway, uh, is not limited to this particular property, and that could also be imported into this. We could also include thi- this particular extension into the canal only to this, for Aretha, this particular property, which is the only property that is. So, uh, and, and that was the intent, that was the intent of this, of this waterway extension, and that was just for this particular property. But you're quite right, Mr. Pichon, it was not, um, i- it, it was not intended to be a broad statement, applicable citywide.
Right.
So, so therefore, it could be fixed, it's fixable.
So, right now, we'll, we're ruling on this gentleman's situation, and that's it?
Well, we're dealing with nineteen, basically, we're dealing with nineteen-foot wide property.
We're dealing with all these townhomes that have, uh, the same issue as the three applicants, yes.
Right, and that would apply to all those townhomes and all the nineteen-foot properties.
And only the townhomes.
Only, only.
But before we get on to this, let's, uh, let Commissioner McGiermay have his opportunity to speak. Commissioner McGiermay?
Uh, yes. Um, I've had, uh, two experiences with these townhomes. Um, both when I almost bought one, and, um, secondly, in dealing with a mistake. Um, I was advised by the realtor involved on both occasions that I could only have a vessel of very, very limited size. It just seems to me that you don't buy a nineteen-foot-wide piece of property expecting to moor a twenty-two-foot boat. I mean, it just logically doesn't make sense. Now, obviously, you know, times, obviously, times have changed, and as one person pointed out, boats have gotten bigger. But it just seems like, and I understand that one time these townhomes were a real value. I mean, it was a easy, inexpensive way to get close to the water and close to the bay. Certainly a lot less expensive than buying a property in Keystone Point. And that's why I almost bought one myself. But to buy a nineteen-foot property, and then after the fact, try to somehow make it work to fit what you want, just, I don't think is, i- is, I don't think it's right. Um, but again, we are, obviously, don't want to, you know, unnecessarily harm someone in this whole process. Um, and certainly, we don't want to impugn staff, because I think we have a very, very good staff here, uh, in the city. But I think what I'm coming down to is that we've had several people comment on, maybe I, maybe errors is, is the wrong word, but maybe that the drafting of the ordinance needs to be taken another look at, to address some of the issues that, uh, Mr. Pichon and Mr. Ernst have brought up. And so before we go and do something faulty that we're going to regret later, like as the gentleman said earlier, when he came up and said, he, you know, about opening Pandora's box, you approve something, and the next thing you know, you don't know what you're going to wind up with. We don't want to do that either. So it just seems to me that one of the things that we might want to do, um, is to go back and ask that this ordinance, that these various items that have been raised by the committee tonight, by the planning commission tonight, be looked at and addressed and come back to us, so that we don't approve something that we're going to regret later.
Of course, and, you know, hindsight is always twenty-twenty. My, my personal statement on this is simple enough. I don't have a problem with perpendicular parking of boats, that doesn't bother me in the slightest, I think, in this application, it makes perfectly good sense. Uh, where we, if we made our error was in allowing the developers to plat that for nineteen-foot-wide properties, that was the stake. Now, since we're past that and can't change that one, I, I can buy into the perpendicular, that's very easy, I, I have no issue with that at all. I recognize that boats have gotten bigger, I have no problem with that. Uh, I'm really not terribly concerned with this business of thirty percent or thirty feet, because it's a hundred-foot-wide waterway, and we're only talking about perpendicular parking along the Aretha development on the south side of that canal. I'm a little bit more concerned with how this ordinance reads when we get into the lower half of it, and we say boat lifts and water crafts into the quote, cities, waterways, or canals, implying that it covers all of our territory. I know at the beginning, we talked about establishing appropriate regulations for the townhome properties identified as section one through nine of Aretha Estate subdivision, blah, blah, blah. And, and then a few lines further, we address all the cities, waterways, or canals, and I, and then that, to me, implies that we're giving somebody the hook to pursue this further for the rest of Keystone and San Souci, and we really don't want to do that. We want to be very specific, that this is limited only to the townhomes on the, along the, the Aretha development, only on the south side of the canal, that is a clear restriction. With that restriction in mind, I can live with the, the thirty percent, thirty-foot issue, whichever is less, and I, I have no problem at all with perpendicular parking. I, when we were reviewing this a long time ago, back in two thousand and two, when I had a little more hair and it wasn't all so white, uh, I, I wondered to myself then why we weren't allowing for perpendicular parking. But not being a boating person didn't, didn't bother me terribly much at that time. So, you, you know, I can, I can see where we're going with this, and I, I can, I can approve the ordinance as written with the, the re- the recommendations that Mr. Ernst has made. So, uh, this is a divided commission at this point, we're not going to have unanimous vote. Nonetheless, I, I think we, we've had our say, and we either send it forward with recommendations, or we deny the change, and, and that's really all this is going to come down to. And so, with this in mind, the chair calls for some commissioner to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Michael?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance with the recommendations and the changes that were set out during discussions by, uh, Commissioner Pinchon and Commissioner Ernst.
Okay.
Is that?
Uh, I think we need to be a, a little more specific than that.
Let, I just want to say that the title to this ordinance, ordinance clearly articulates the scope, the intent of the scope, which is only Aretha, this, this Aretha property. So, um, it was already stated for the parallel portion of the, of this amendment. The only, the only clarification, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, would be in the section that speaks of the waterways or canals. That's, that portion needs to be, the scope needs to be clarified and limited only to this particular property. But that's one rec, that's one way to go.
Right.
The other way to go is to allow the parallel parking, and, and then.
Perpendicular parking.
Perpendicular, that's really allowed. Um, the perpendicular parking, and, and then look at, um, are we going to keep the twenty percent or twenty-five feet, whichever is less, or are we going to allow the thirty, uh, percent of the width, or thirty feet, whichever is less, for this property? So, I mean.
Well, I, I, first of all, then, uh, before we get into, uh, a second on, on Mike's motion, what can we do with this line about cities, waterways, or canals? We, we don't want to open the box to future litigation.
Which section are you referring to, um, Mr. Chair?
Well, it's, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thir- fourteenth line coming down. Fourteenth line from the top.
Actually, on page three of six, it's, it's mentioned as an underline, uh, addition to the, uh, to the ordinance.
Three, six.
In paragraph three.
No, but that's the staff report, we, we, we got to, we got to refer to the ordinance, you're, you're looking at the staff report.
Yeah.
No, but it does, in the staff report, the underline, I, I take it is what the text change should be. If you look on that paragraph.
Are we looking at B two?
Says article five, division six, section five dash six oh one, to provide that for the townhomes of the subdivision, boats may be moored either parallel or per- perpendicular, abutting the canal or waterway. So that really was kind of addressed.
Yes, except that the, this is, the, the ordinance that I've read into the record, and it's published on page one, that's the ordinance that's going to be adopted or not. And so that ordinance as written has the phrase, cities, waterways, or canals, which I think is opening us up to future issues concerning the rest of, of Keystone and San Souci. And so with that in mind, how do we reconcile that? I understand where you're coming from there, uh, this is directed to the.
Could that in fact be the language that should be in the ordinance? That I just, that I just read?
Well, I'm thinking that that's, that's, that's an issue, that the city attorney, perhaps, it's all right, Frank, we, we, we've heard your side, it's okay.
So can we swap that language over?
I know, I wanted to make a suggestion.
Okay, no, no, don't make a suggestion on the record now, we've done, we're past that.
Uh, city, is it possible to swap the language over from page six to the ordinance?
See, oddly enough, staff report is a good deal more specific than the ordinance is.
On page six, six of six.
Staff report is a more, it's six of six. That's the staff report.
Yes, part of the sta- that's what I'm saying, so the language from the staff report, can we?
Can we recommend it be adopted into the ordinance?
Yes.
You see, that the problem gets into cities, waterways, or canals, which seems to open Pandora's box on the, the whole rest of the city, even though the intent was only to deal with.
It reads citywide. It reads citywide.
Yeah, and, and it's not citywide, it's, it's quite restrictive to this one strip of townhomes on the south side of the canal.
So, but, Mr. Chairman, my, my other question would be, I think we need the staff to, to speak to the county about whether that's permissible for properties that size.
It's, uh, I don't, I, I don't think it's prohibited, this is a city, uh, uh, you know, canal, it's not a county canal. Uh, Durham still has jurisdiction, jurisdiction will not be taken away from Durham when it comes to, you know, building these docks. So that's, that's still going to be something that the applicant's going to have to go through. And in fact, I think in, in, in their case, they were approved by Durham.
But I, but there is a, there is a provision, and I think that I, I think the staff needs to research it, about how far into a channel you can go based upon your shoreline. That's a regulation that the sta- that the county has for all of their waterways. You can only go so far.
All of their waterways.
And the city can be more restrictive and go, well, fifty feet puts you in your neighbor's backyard, so you can only go twenty. But if the city says you can o- if the county says you can only go twenty, we can't pass a regulation that says thirty's okay.
Uh, Commissioner Petron, if I could clarify, um, currently in the code, the same section, actually, five dash six oh two, there is a restriction as to how far you can go. It says more, no more than thirty-five feet from the property line, that's currently in your code, been in your code for twenty.
I understand, and I'm suggesting that that was a citywide ordinance, and now we're trying to deal with a unique, one-off situation where the property is nineteen feet. And the county has a, a, a geometric formula of how far out into the water you can protrude. And for, I think, everybody else in the waterways, that the geometric formula fits, it, it's, it's comfortable, that formula, with our city ordinances. The only problem is when you get to a nineteen-foot property. So I would be, somebody mentioned embarrassed, I would be embarrassed as a commission to recommend to the city council something that the county finds to be at odds with their regulations.
Well, on the other hand, this is a really unique situation, and I, I don't think we're going to find that this would set a precedent or would damage other regulations as it exists, I, I.
If I recall back in two thousand and two, this, the issue of county versus our regulations, our, our regulations, if I'm not correct, as long as it didn't go over what the county said, we could, we could, uh, regulate on our own, is that correct?
I agree with that, and the county's not going to tell you that you can go out three times further into the channel than the length of your property line, and that is basically what we're saying.
So. Again, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
You, you know, I tried to, I tried to, to, you know, to make a motion to try and incorporate all of the items that have been mentioned up here, and all the concerns that have been mentioned up here. I, I, I think that maybe, you know, there's a lot of this that it needs to go back to staff, um, to really deal with a lot of these issues that we've discussed, so that, and I hate to put any of these people through the hardship they've been here, sitting here all night, but, you know, I, I think if we're going to do it, Mr. Chairman, we need to have an ordinance that really, really works, and has all the bells and whistles that we want, because this is a hotly contested issue, and has been so for a long time in this city. And we don't want to, in my, in my opinion, we don't want to, to send to the city council any kind of document that isn't right, that has a lot of things hanging chads, so to speak, okay, involved in it, and, um, you know, that's why I initially said what we need to do is to, to send it back, to correct the language, to incorporate the various, um, you know, parameters and limitations that Mr. Ernst set out, um, because we seem to be going around in discussion on the various items within this ordinance that, um, people have recommendations or problems with.
Let me ask the, uh, members of the commission, in an informal sense here, are we, are we comfortable with the concept of perpendicular parking?
Yeah, I, I think we're all, I think we're okay with that.
I think we're comfortable with that.
Perpendicular, we can deal with, okay, so we, our real concern is whether we, we stick to the same twenty-twenty-five, or we go the thirty-thirty issue. And my concern is that line about cities, waterways, or canals, if we're not opening Pandora's box with that statement, there might be a better way to phrase that.
Question.
Yes, Ms. Boulay?
So, we're clear that parking perpendicular is, it poses no safety issues?
Not for this distance, not given that the waterway's a hundred feet wide, that's, and given the constraints of the bridge, you're, you're not going to get a hundred-foot boat down there anyway.
Okay, you're fine.
There is a practical limitation beyond which you're not going to be able to go on the size of a boat. Uh, the, the issue really is, do we allow something to stick out a little bit further?
Mm-hmm, which I'm clear on, I just wanted to make sure everything was fine.
You know, I, I don't have a problem personally with the thirty percent of thirty feet, but I, I understand, and, you know, the, the, some people here may be more concerned with that issue. Uh, but on the perpendicular side, we seem to all agree that that's fine. I think, uh, Aretha, this, this Aretha townhome development is extraordinarily unique, uh, in that we ever allowed a nineteen-foot-wide property. We did, and now we're stuck. We did, and now we're stuck with the aftermath. And, uh, I, I don't have a problem with slightly larger boats. They, they get bigger.
But we, I think we have more, more concerns other than just the language. I know Mr. Ernst wanted to set out some particular limitations within the, within the ordinance and, and protections, um, going forward. So, that's why I say, I think, I, I, you know, just to approve a document to approve a document, I, I don't think that, I don't know, there seems to be a lot of, you know, hanging chads kinda thing that I think we need to deal with. And I, I don't know whether, considering, reconsidering it at a, at a future time after staff has had to look at everybody's input, might not be a, a preferable option.
The, 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 the issue, the ordinance itself is really a narrowly construed four-square issue, except for that one line of cities, waterways, or canals.
Again, that, that.
I disagree with the, the distance into the waterways or the canal.
Yes, that's the issue, the distance into the waterway. That's what we're all uncomfortable with. And we don't have unanimity of opinion on that. Uh, and I can accept Mr. Ernst's recommendations as part of any ordinance. I think they're valid, but you seem confused.
Well, uh, you know, there's, there's various ways you can approach this. You, you, you seem to be unanimous on the, on the perpendicular parking. So why don't you vote on that just in and of itself, and, and, and then let's move forward to this other section? And then this other section, the protrusion, protrusion into the waterway, you could, you could, um, you know, offer to amend. You can offer to, you know, perhaps come back and, and rehear if, if the applicants agree. But, so, at least let's focus only on the sections that, that we're having an issue with.
What did you have to say about the page six?
Let, let me ask you something. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
By allowing perpendicular parking, we're going to solve the problem of them getting citations, correct? Even if we don't address the distance out to the channels?
Yeah, the orientation portion, the, the, the portion that, that they relied to their detriment.
Right.
Uh, would be taken care of. So these three applicants at the very least could say, you know, they're, 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 you're not legalizing something.
Unfortunately, they're probably gonna get fined for, because of the fact that this is not going to be, your, your violation probably will not get grandfathered in. It's not going to solve you, they still have to go through a hearing process. What I'm trying to tell them is that if we, we allow perpendicular parking, it's not gonna solve your problem of you with your tickets that you have now. That's a code enforcement problem, and that has nothing to do with us.
We, we, we could, we could take.
Just a minute, sir, please, we cannot hear you.
No.
Okay, fine.
Code enforcement, you know, this is a text amendment, so code enforcement, we'll handle that at the code enforcement stage.
Right.
And as the gentleman just indicated, those actions have been stayed pending the outcome.
Okay, that I didn't know. I did not know that that, again, we, it would have been nice if we had been informed, uh, of those facts. Unfortunately, we didn't. So, therefore, I'm, I'm glad that you, you know, that's been resolved. So.
All right, so we have an understanding that enforcement has been stayed pending the resolution. The ordinance and we're.
And, and I'm gonna clarify that. I have no authority over code enforcement to stop to.
Exactly, nor do we.
They could go too morrow and cite them.
Right, but they've all, they've, they've agreed to stay. Okay, that's helpful.
I just wanted to put that caveat.
All right.
All right, and so we're, are all of us in favor of the perpendicular statement? Anybody opposed perpendicular? Nope? Okay, so, we're all in favor of perpendicular. So we've got that.
Well, we need to have the motion and the vote on that.
Well, I mean, I, I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
So let me amend that motion to include approval of the perpendicular docks.
All right, so Michael, your motion is to approve the, the perpendicular dock, to adopt Mr. Ernst's recommendations. And what about the issue of the twenty-five feet or twenty percent or thirty percent thirty feet? That's the third issue.
But that, is that not part of the other?
No, that's.
Other issues that we have to address?
Well, that's, I, I need to clarify his motion.
Okay. I, I would say the, uh, twenty-five, twenty.
So you're clarifying your motion at this point to endorse the perpendicular, keep the twenty, twenty-five feet, and.
Incorporate the changes.
Incorporate the recommendations of Mr. Ernst. All right, so that's a conservative approach.
Which again, those recommendations to restate to staff, is that a uniform, uh, standardization of, of, uh, dock construction along those townhouses? So that pilings and docks would be.
All this is just for this property, nothing else. We're not looking beyond just those properties, correct?
Because realistically, what it comes down to is there needs to be a line drawn beyond which the boat cannot encroach into the waterway.
Right.
And that's what we seem to be missing with the ordinance. What is the maximum encroachment? And that has not been asked or answered. And if we knew that, or could make a recommendation to that effect, uh, then we'd.
Well, that would be a separate issue as indicated by staff.
Well, yeah, we're gonna take, take this in pieces. We're gonna call for a vote on the, on the perpendicular issue and get that much approved. And we've gotta deal with the encroachment issue. That's, that's a major issue here.
Well, if, if council has a suggestion, and I, I would welcome that he will, you know, that he presents this to you as an alternative for your consideration. And that would be another limitation on what is being proposed right now, if you may, Council.
All right, on the, on the advice of the, of the deputy city attorney, we'll allow you to speak, Mr. Wallen.
Okay, thank you. Um, by way of a compromise, because that's a good thing, the way the ordinance reads now, because it says whichever is less, and we know how wide the waterway is, so it's twenty feet. So that's the maximum you could come out if you left that part of it the way it is. You're permitted to have a five-foot dock. Anyone who has a boat, you can't just leave the boat up against the dock. You need about a foot, just for the tides and what have you. So if you allowed for a five-foot dock and a one-foot gap and two feet for the motor, and you moored perpendicularly with twenty feet, you would have a thirteen-foot boat. That would be the biggest boat you could have. Using those, those are the real numbers. If, if you were to, instead of saying or less, whichever is less controlling, allow the owners to have twenty-five feet, so we're getting rid of the or less, just give them a uniform twenty-five feet. That way they can have a five-foot dock, same one-foot gap, two feet for the motor, and they could have a seventeen-foot boat. Okay, that would be the biggest boat they could have, given twenty-five feet. If you wanted, it would not be unreasonable, and it has been suggested to me by, uh, by another expert that I consulted, okay, uh, who is the gentleman who does the work for, uh, Ocean Consulting, all right? And his suggestion was, and I'm just gonna read it out loud into the record. Um, usually we are talking about structure, not the vessel parked adjacent. When we talk about the twenty-five-foot rule, so if we kept the structure at twenty-five percent or twenty-five feet, we'll have a much better argument for vessels extending beyond that boundary slightly, as in parked perpendicular, with bow extending beyond the structured mooring piles. For example, mooring piles would be set at twenty-five percent of the width, but the vessel could extend, and he said to thirty feet or five feet more than the piles if the waterway is a hundred feet. But my suggestion is if you allowed the vessel to extend two or three feet beyond.
So twenty-five, Frank?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-five feet, is that what you're saying?
Right, I'm saying if you, if you fix the mooring piles at twenty-five feet and allowed the bow of the vessel to extend two or three feet beyond, then the people who live there could actually really legally have a nineteen-foot boat. That's what I'm suggesting, and.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Couldn't they have that today if they don't build a five-foot dock?
Mr. Wallen, I, I, I do agree with you because having, I, like I said, I do the boat shows. We had the same problem in my beach with some of the boats that we docked. When we backed them in, we were allowed to have that three-foot overhang from where the piling was. Just like Mr. Wallen said. And these were big, super yachts, but they allowed us to have that bow extend past the twenty-five-foot limit.
And I think if you allowed it to extend a couple of feet, then, then it's fine.
Mr. Chairman, can I amend my motion?
You can, you're allowed to amend.
To, um, uh, to, um, uh, accept the compromise of the straight twenty-five feet rather than.
And we're talking the pilings?
Yes.
And then how far out is the, do you want the?
Twenty-five, twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet on the pilings?
Maximum encro- intrusion into the channel.
And if you give, if you allow another two or three feet, then you can have a boat that's nineteen feet.
So twenty-five feet maximum.
Right, maximum for the pilings.
On the piling, yes.
Going into the channel.
And then the boat will extend beyond to some.
And some, maybe some will, some won't.
Two or three feet.
Yeah.
Maybe two or three feet, but that's the bow, not the entire structure of the boat.
All right, so we'll.
I'm willing to, to live with that.
To address it as pilings?
Yes.
Okay, and not address the length of the boat at this point?
Right.
All right, uh, Mr. McDermott, would you accept that, that amendment? All right?
It's not just pilings, it's structures.
Well, structure, pilings.
Like the docks?
Well, I'm saying the structure itself, you put, somebody put a floating dock in there. It can't go beyond the, the, the.
Well, we, I pretty much, I think we established that it would be the vessel and not just a floating.
Well, that's, that wasn't what was just said. That's why I'm trying to correct that.
I understand.
See, that this is based on pilings, if you, if you, if you're.
Well, if we're.
Pilings.
What, what do you wanna use, what do you wanna use instead of piling? What word do you wanna use instead of piling?
Docks or dock, docks or pilings, or basically we cover it.
And how far can the boat go out?
The boat could go out two feet or maybe.
Twenty feet?
No.
Why not?
I don't think so, no.
I mean, I'm just asking the question.
He's gotta be able to, he's gotta, I don't think he could tie up his boat if it stuck out twenty, twenty feet.
It's only if he's got less than a nineteen-foot beam.
See, I don't have a problem with an extra five feet on the boat itself. That's still negligible in a hundred-foot-wide waterway. But I can see the twenty-five foot on pilings because that's a structure going in.
Right. And no, and, and by the looks of it, they, they may not, nobody, you know, we have nothing before saying that they wanna put a dock going out that far.
Right, twenty-five feet would seem to be reasonable, and it's uniform on that side.
Okay, and I, I accept that change, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we're agreed at twenty-five feet for dock and pilings. Dock or pilings.
Can we look for clarification? I need to know how we're going to amend this precisely. On page six of eight, appears in yellow highlight the section that's being amended.
Six, six of eight?
Yeah, that's where the ordinance actually sits.
Folks, we appreciate your patience, but we do have to iron out the wording on this.
The detail, the devil's in the details.
There, there's a lot of details that we need to iron out to get the wording right.
And we'd rather, really rather not have to do this again.
So, um, this would be Section five dash six oh two, right? B, B two A, it's yellow in yellow highlight.
Right.
So I guess the proposed amendment would be waterways or canals, no more than, and then it would read twenty-five feet maximum.
Correct.
As measured from the property line, period. Everything else comes out. And this, this, this goes to the extension of mooring piles, dolphins, floating vessel platforms, hydrohoist, boatless, and watercraft shall be limited to as follows. And that's the language. Thank you.
And watercraft includes the boat. That's a boat.
Uh, it's pretty much, yeah, jet skis, anything that is. And we could, we could, you know, we could, uh, put boats on there as well. I.
The other thing would be, do we allow a, a variance for a boat that's a few feet longer? You know, would there be an, uh, an administrative process if they had a boat that was a total of thirty feet?
I thought we are, I think we, we, I don't agree with that. I think we just covered that by extending from twenty to twenty-five feet.
Right, right, exactly.
Where does it end?
What you're doing, uh, Mr. Chairman, is you're limiting the, I mean, you're limiting the, the, the size of the boat.
We're limiting the structure.
And therefore limiting the size of the boat, which is what we're trying to do.
Yes, I understand that. Uh, but, you know, what's a few more feet on the front of a boat? It rather narrows at the front anyway. Well, I understand that, but there should be some reasonable issue. You don't wanna cut him off at a, at twenty-five feet in total.
Because.
You know, that's the, but.
There, there comes a point in time, Mr. Chairman, that we have to limit the.
Yeah, there, sure, your, 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 your bridge isn't gonna be built any higher, so.
And, and I think with the twenty-five feet, the way it is and the way council set it out, it's gonna automatically limit the size of the, size of the boat.
Anyway.
Yes, but, uh.
Not necessarily. So, so, Commissioner Pichon, watercraft means, this is, uh, under Article seven. Watercraft means any vehicle or contrivance. You, you, okay, there, thank you. Used, contraband, right? Used or capable of being used for navigation upon water, whether or not capable of self-proporation, so, uh, propulsion. So that means that it's pretty well all-encompassing. I mean, this will include a boat.
Could be a boat, could be a barge.
A barge, a jet ski, a canoe.
A canoe, yeah.
Anything, yes.
All right, so, uh, we're set then on the twenty-five feet? Is that the consensus?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, we have a consensus on that?
Are you okay with the twenty-five feet?
It includes watercraft.
He said, uh, Deputy Attorney.
At the present time, that would include watercraft, and we'll see what the next problem is. All right, let's, let's go with that, if we can, if we can do that. So, uh, at great hazard, Mr. McDermott, uh, let's hear that motion again.
Okay, the motion was to.
Speaking to the mic.
The motion was to approve the perpendicular docks.
Okay.
Okay, to limit the structure to twenty, maximum of twenty-five feet in the waterway. And to incorporate the recommendations of, um, uh, Mr. Ernst and Mr. Pinchon.
I second.
As, as I read it on the record earlier, and by the way, this is only applicable, again, only to, to the subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
So, so that, that assurance will be, um, also interjected into this particular section. Thank you.
All right, so if we're to read on that, we have a second to the motion?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Boullet. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congrats.
All right. And I don't doubt we'll see half of you here again within the next ten years. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you all for your patience.
And thank you for serving our country.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the planning commission, we need to set our next meeting date. Uh, media's not adjourned. Staff, if you would please, our next meeting date. Let's get this on the record.
Uh, yeah, Mr., folks, uh, as a point of order.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wallen, Mr. Wallen, just for the record, please remind your, your clients that, uh, the final reading on this will, will occur on the twenty-second of March. First reading, and then, no, 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 no. It's, it's gonna go to first reading, March twenty-second, and then second reading in April. The second Tuesday in April.
For this particular piece of property, I really don't have a, an advocate on it. Based on looking at it further. And I don't think, I think it's wide enough.
You gotta go to work.
In real, in real terms, you really only need thirty.
Hi, Johnny.
Thirty percent of navigable waterway to, you know, the boat up and down a stream.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Cause most of the beams are all gonna be eight feet.
Right.
Eight to ten feet on a beam.
All right, so, uh. Mr. Dixon, the notes and the photographs to be incorporated into the record. We are now set for the twenty, for the fifth of, of, uh, April, April the fifth. Are there, any conflict with the use of the room, April the fifth? Are there, any conflict with the use of the room, April the fifth? Far as we know, we're set?
Far as we know, we are set.
Alright, next Planning Commission will be Tuesday, April the fifth, at seven PM. Please let the record reflect that Emmanuel left before the vote was taken. He had a calendar conflict. Oh, you're here, you said you were leaving.
No, I said I was going to the restroom.
Oh, listen, it's okay to do that, but you need to say that in the right ear, not the left.
Oh, okay, well, now I know for future reference.
Yes, future reference, yes. Sorry, so he's back here, okay, I didn't catch that return.
So you didn't see me all this time?
Yeah, no, I didn't, I was focused on the notes, sorry. That's what happens when you get older and-
I guess it's because we're not boaters.
Nearsighted, you wind up with tunnel vision, as I tell people, don't be a pedestrian in my neighborhood.
Some in-depth boat commerce.
Alright, is there any further item to come before the commission? None, alright, this meeting stands adjourned at twenty minutes of ten. Thank you. Bob, wonderful job, you hit a lot of good points.